to me so bug me during the meeting like that that is gonna work
they got video
I want to let everyone you want to let everyone know
so we I started the video for YouTube so we don't need to keep everything light as your being broadcast has started we are online can you hear the squeaky toy now
no I don't hear it
wait for it here's all the phone numbers
now you're gonna get all excited huh all that I need did you set up the executive session one just okay I do forgot to check
okay
there you go yeah can you hear it oh that's good then but she's way over there show off dachshunds I believe I'll let her get it out of her system
do you need an agenda
no I have one cleaning and that same
you probably don't have one with number nine on it
no I do not
because I was gonna look here because I added it I think it's gonna show up anyway it does show up here so which is good
yeah I saw it online
so yeah because the other ones you have to actually look under that agenda item it pulls up too
yeah it's confusing if you don't have something
think oh I think we're all on it's gonna be I don't see Mitch
you're not
we can see ya Riley you're on
okay good deal I'm in sounds good
you're in Kim
Mark is having Mark's having some trouble getting on he's looking for a phone number to call in
okay we'll call him
oh wait a minute
thank you
you're there now okay
yeah we'll call you if you disappear and you'll be audio but not video we can bring you in through the phone but you won't oh I see the thank you thumbs up
so we may just have to call him can we have him going that long what about the other person in the chat for persons to be heard is that the same
yep yep but it'll be fine so we can only have up to like fifty people
oh we're fine then we only got three so
because I've done these guys practice so they could practice
so there's two they count those practice calls count
hi Kim this is Richard just want to make sure you can hear me
we can hear you fine where oh there you are but I had don't have a video did you start your video Richard
yep hang on I'm working on it here okay
and are you going to share a screen and present that way or just speak
I was just planning on being here to answer any questions that may come up
okay that sounds great thank you whenever you're ready Dave we're ready to to go
let's do it like to call to order the May sixth twenty twenty one regular meeting of Ketchikan City Council clerk will call the roll
Zingy age here where's your run
here
Eifer
here
Flora
here
Ass
here
Redberry
here
thank you
you all join me in the pledge of allegiance I pledge allegiance
pledge allegiance
to the flag of the United States
United States of America
and to the republic for which it stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all was anyone else saying it
we're all muted but we said it
yeah I'm sure you did you're waiting is he gonna remember it okay the city council Ketchikan City Council would like to respectfully acknowledge the traditional first people of the Slantin Ketchikan the Tongus Clinkit people okay moving on to communications we had several items laid on the table which you all had time to look at um I thought now we would also allow um Chief Hoag to address us because obviously it's been a very interesting weekend as far as covid nineteen is in our community so Chief you're on
good evening Mr. Mayor and members of the council Admiral Hoag emergency manager and it has definitely been an interesting week so far here give me one second here I'm gonna share my screen for this and green there we go you should be able to see my my slides here for you real quick I'll give you an update on covid nineteen in our community I'm gonna talk about current case counts and our risk level I will tell you about the K High cluster update talk some about the effectiveness of vaccines a program called sleeves up for summer campaign and then some additional nation on vaccines in our community so here's the current screenshot of the dashboard from today you'll see that we currently have across the top row there we have eight community transmission cases which puts us solid in the orange level three our number of cases coming from people who are already in quarantine is up a little bit we're up to thirty three percent of our new cases are coming from people who we expected to turn positive and then you see our positivity rate is down just a little bit from yesterday to three point three four percent those are the the three indicators are not in the green I'll tell you that uh at eleven new positives again today we've had double digits of positives for the past four days in the past fourteen days for some perspective we've had sixty eight new positives forty five of those have been since about two thirds of our cases in the last fourteen days have come in the most recent four days a very busy week um we're seeing a lot of close contact cases we're seeing quite a few community trans cases some of those community transmission cases may be because there's just so much going on that it's difficult to trace them to to where those positives came from and who they were in contact with and then sometimes those end up being community community transmission because of that but we definitely have quite a bit of covid in our community we have three clusters currently that public health is tracking and just a lot a lot of activity we're also doing a lot of testing which is helping keep our positivity rate down and we anticipate even more testing in the next with that we will have the drive up testing will be open at birth three both Sunday and Monday this coming weekend uh because of the level of risk that a big part of our positive cases have come from the K High outbreak um as we go through these next couple of slides you'll notice that it says as of yesterday at ten AM as of five five at ten AM this is moving so fast that in order to try to update these slides in time for tonight would have been nearly impossible to do and I can still kind of paint the picture for you even though at about twenty new cases since this information was put together so as of yesterday at ten AM twenty three total people had been affected as a result of the cave K High outbreak eleven of those are students at K High two are staff at K High five additional positive cases associated with K High in our in our community and then another five additional positives that resulted in or in other communities one in Sitka another one in Sitka at Mount Edgecombe one in Craig one in Clawocken one in Rangle for K High students population eleven positives out of five hundred fifty six students uh means that they had a one point nine one point ninety eight percent of the student population was infected that we know of and roughly seven to nine percent of the students had been identified as close contacts and were in quarantine day and then the school is closed for the rest of this well K High is closed the result and plan to go back at fifty percent model um out of the forty nine cases in the previous fourteen days eleven were students and eighteen were directly associated with K High outbreak eighteen Ketchikan cases it's a total of twenty three A High outbreak total twenty two percent of the cases in Ketchikan the last fourteen days had been students and thirty six um percent had been associated with that high school cluster so a very large portion of our current is associated with that club piece that's not so fun to talk about here what you're seeing here is a list of I think eleven of those positives in the school I apologize if it's a little small and hard to read but what this is really showing you if you look in the comments column each one of those representing an individual student case um most of them were in school while they were infectious and then the black line below the red in each row you'll see that many of those days were after they had symptom onset fortunately what that tells me is these young adults made bad decisions they decided to attend school after having symptoms and even worse than that some other parents likely knew that they had symptoms and still allowed them to attend activities that's why we're where we're at currently large part and that's not just students we're seeing that happen with other folks as well people are going to work people are going to activities while they have symptoms instead of following the recommendations that we know work to help stop the spread vaccines are effective um April first through May fifth again at ten AM we had had seventy seven positives in our community of those two were in fully vaccinated individuals and seventy five were in unvaccinated people of the unvaccinated one was partially vaccinated already and eighteen are ineligible because they're fifteen years of age and younger and that left fifty seven people that were positive that are eligible to get a vaccine and that vaccine has been widely available for well over a month now like two or three and that's what the the pie chart to the right hand side there shows you just the percentages of those vaccinated and unvaccinated um to to take it a step further if you look at the vaccinated individuals our population of vaccinated individuals is six thousand four hundred eleven there's only two positives that means there's zero point three positives per one thousand individuals the ineligible not vaccinated people two thousand six twenty nine there's six point eight cases per one thousand people in that population and then the the not vaccinated the the all others twelve point three cases per one thousand so as you can see from that your risk of becoming covid positive is significantly higher if you're unvaccinated uh regarding the population of younger people who are not currently eligible Pfizer has or the FDA has scheduled their hearing on the Pfizer request to include ages twelve to fifteen in their emergency use authorization for May twelfth which is Wednesday next week we do expect that they'll approve that request and that we'll be able to begin vaccinating uh people who are ages twelve to fifteen by the end of next week we also have been told that Pfizer intends to submit an application for ages two to twelve and that we could see that happen and be approved as early as June moving on uh the state has implemented a new campaign and we're participating in that it's called sleeves up for summer uh to view the information on that campaign and our status within it you can go to covid vax dot alaska dot gov and then you click on this image on that page and that will bring you to a dashboard where you can get some more information the idea of this campaign is to try to get encourage communities to increase their vaccination rate by twenty five percent during the month of May and help prepare us for summer more vaccinated people means less transmission which means we're more open our economy can start to get back on track keep things up and running when you do click on that that next page and select to go to the dashboard this is the kind of information you can gather it showed in this case I've used the dropdown the top right hand corner to select H Can Gateway Borough and you can see that we've since this campaign started we vaccinated three hundred fifteen people to reach our goal we would need two thousand four hundred thirty seven more with vaccines opening for ages twelve to fifteen during this time it's definitely something that we can reach want to keep striving for that what you see in this bottom left hand corner is where we stand compared to all the other boroughs in the state and we're the red line here about the middle of the pack you don't really want to be the middle of the pack in my opinion I think we probably want to push our way up a little bit more and people in Ketchikan have a very competitive nature hopefully they'll see this and they'll want to help help push us towards the front little bit of additional vaccine information uh with the current outbreak going on K High nursing staff is going to be doing testing tomorrow from eight AM to noon at A High in the bus lane uh this is for staff students and any family or household members of those staff and students that get tested in addition I don't know why they're testing on a vaccine page but uh you know things start to run together uh going back to vaccine though local providers do have vaccine available whoever you see locally as your normal provider probably has vaccine available and you can probably get an appointment in addition public health does vaccine clinics every Monday and those appointments are available through the covid vax website uh the E O C and public health are working together to offer mobile vaccination clinics um also on Mondays um you can email our covid questions at kgbak.us or you can call our liaison officer if you your business or your organization can get together ten people ten to twenty people who want to get vaccinated we can bring those vaccines to your location and provide that service and then the last thing I wanted to make you aware of is that we're working on a project to bring what we're calling a mini vaccine depot to Ketchikan what that is is um What that is, is the ability to distribute Pfizer vaccine locally, as you may recall, that vaccine, once it's thawed, is only good for five days. And currently for us to get vaccine in Ketchikan, our providers have to order it from the state. It gets thawed and shipped to them. They lose one of those five days in transit, which means by the time they get it, they only have four days to use that vaccine. It makes it very difficult for them to do. So we're going to have, we have a freezer here in Ketchikan at this point and we will be getting an entire tray of Pfizer delivered in a frozen state, which is then, it will last for up to six months in the freezer at that state. And then it can be distributed as needed, thawed and distributed to our local providers with no delay so they can get all five days of use time. And those are the updates I have for you this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Does any council members have, do any of you have questions for Chief Hoag?
I do.
Go ahead.
Um, Chief Hoag, thank you again always for the work that you do. I just had a lot of citizens reaching out recently asking questions about our, I guess, metric of determining our positivity rate. Is it, the only reason I ask that is because I feel like our number of testing has kind of gone down even during this cluster. And so I'm wondering if, you know, everybody was testing that was deemed a close contact, would our positivity rate be so high? Or is that just a coincidence because of how many in such a short amount of time?
Our positivity rate calculation, trying to think of how to answer this to best explain it so that it's clear because it can get very confusing, even to me looking at it all the time. So the more people that test, the lower our positivity rate will be. What positivity rate is really telling us is, are we testing enough? We change those thresholds as our vaccination rates have gone up so that we don't require as many people to get tested in order to keep our positivity rate at the same. So where we're at three percent positivity today, or where we're, sorry, a risk level, where we're, where we hit the threshold to go to the higher risk level, a few weeks ago, we would have required a lot more testing in order to stay at the lower risk level. But we increased the amount of, see what I mean? Even, even understanding it, I have trouble explaining it. The positivity rate's always going to remain constant. It's because it's the positivity, the number of positive tests as a percentage of the number of tests conducted. So that regardless of what your vaccine rate or what your risk threshold is, the positivity number is always going to be the same. But now we don't go to level three until we're over three percent positivity, where before we would go to that at two percent positivity, which means that we can have a lot more positive people before that becomes a problem. And we have seen testing go down in, in overall numbers, generally speaking, and that's because not as many people are getting tested. Part of that has to do with the vaccination rate. If you're vaccinated and you're a close contact to a positive, public health doesn't tell you to go get tested anymore and you don't have to quarantine anymore. So that takes away the number of people that potentially would even want to test. And that's why we raised that threshold to a higher level before we increase our risk.
Okay. That makes a lot of, a lot of sense. And that was going to be my next question is vaccinated people getting tested. Um, I guess the last set of questions that I have is kind of, what is the end game to this, to the risk levels? I mean, there's been talk that herd immunity probably won't be able to be reached in a timely manner to kind of ward off any variants. What if we never hit that herd immunity? What, is this going to be how we function, you know, the rest of time or like for the next five years or what, what is the end game of, of this?
I really hope it's not for the rest of time because I'm not sure that I could keep doing that forever. You know, my ultimate goal in the EOC is to work myself out of a job. I want to close the EOC. I want to get to that point. If you look at many of the objectives that we set in the EOC early on, we've accomplished those with the exception of this recent outbreak. Everything was looking really, really good. Unfortunately with the pandemic, that's a really hard question to answer and I, and I have posed that question recently. The Unified Command's been discussing it and we've been talking with the policy group about that. And what do, what does our community, what does our leadership want to see as our objectives going forward? What do you feel as elected officials is appropriate? I need that input because reaching a termination of the pandemic could take years for the, the health emergency to, to end. We, we could have this ongoing for quite some time. Is the threshold that we have vaccines available to everyone for sixty days and then whoever hasn't gotten it, just hasn't gotten it and that's their choice? Is the threshold a certain level of, of vaccination rate and we think we're at herd immunity? Is it that we're below certain risk levels for a certain period of time? Usually in an emergency, I can pretty clearly tell you what we need to do to get to a point where we're safe. I can't so easily tell you that. And then the other challenge with this type of incident is that part of why we are doing as well as we are is because of the mitigation measures we've taken. And if we stop doing those, maybe we go right back to where we were. And so we're trying to balance that and not, not just say, well, let's call it quits and then bounce back to a point where we do overwhelm our hospital or we have people dying because we don't really want to have that. So I guess in a long way of saying, I don't have that answer right now.
Well, you, you answered it to best of your ability and I think this is definitely something that needs to be discussed by, you know, every, you know, official, city officials or staff of all the entities involved to figure out what, what is the point moving forward? What, what is the ultimate end game? Is it the EOC will, God bless you, be around for another year? Or is it something we just do, you know, in the next, like you said, sixty days or kind of what? I think that start, needs to start becoming a, a discussion.
We do have a significant portion. We do a, what's called an incident action plan and that's done currently on a four-week basis. So we have a four-week operational period. We just started a new one this last Saturday. And a big portion of that plan is to try to determine and set some of these thresholds for when we can spin down operations. We are intending to stop distributing PPE and supplies on a regular basis by the fifteenth of this month. Our, our local providers all have a decent supply established at this point and they can get new supplies. So they don't need us for that anymore. So we're going to spin that down, but we're going to keep a stock of thirty-day supply for them that we're going to put in kind of a long or medium-term storage. We're starting to look at ways we can transition testing and those types of operations over to normal, um, normal businesses to, you know, to the economy instead of being done by the EOC or supported by the EOC. But we really are looking at ways that we can start to dial this back and get back to normal government and normal business taking over those.
Your Honor.
Thank you.
Go ahead, is that Councilmember Gage?
Yeah, that's me. Abner, what, have they considered testing for those strands that are a lot worse? Have we looked at testing to make sure we haven't gotten any of those here? And then, um, I, I, I guess my, my concern is that people, I, I don't know how, you know, if maybe we could compare the past one hundred years of the previous pandemic lasted, the timeframe. We, we need to acknowledge that, you know, these things don't just go away. And how do we get that acknowledgement within the community to understand that sometimes getting better takes a little more time than six weeks or a year?
The first part of your question, the genomic sequencing that you're talking about to determine the variants, that is happening with certain specimens from throughout the state. None of our local providers actually have that capacity internally. They have to send those specimens to the state lab. Every positive is required to be reported to, to the state epidemiology office. They review them and then they inform the provider if they want the specimen sent to the lab for genomic sequencing. And generally speaking, travel cases are sent because there are a higher chance of being some other variant. People who are reinfected within ninety days are sent. And then other cases as the, as Epi deems appropriate for, usually for unique circumstances where they think there's a high risk, it's a more severe case or something like that, they'll ask for those specimens to be sent. So they are being sent from Ketchikan. To date, I haven't been informed of any of those other variants being detected in any Asking another question.
Abner, I think we kind of lost you there.
I was trying to recall what the second question was that Councilmember Gage had.
The question would be like, how do we, have you looked at how we're going to address the, I know people are very anxious and just wanted to be over. And at the same time, the safety of our community is our highest priority. And I'm, I'm a little bit disappointed in what happened, to be honest with you. But I'm, I, I understand.
The time of previous historic pandemics, right? And the, the flu pandemic lasted for well over a year. I, I think it may have even been two by the time that it was completely done. Whoever Kifer's holding up three fingers, so maybe it was three years. But they do last quite a bit of time. That doesn't mean that we have to have an emergency operation going that entire time. Ultimately, I think we will be able to transfer the operations over to our normal healthcare system, to our normal public health system. I mean, they deal with infectious disease all the time. It's just a matter of getting to a point where their systems are ready to continue to handle that and they no longer need support from our EOC.
Thank you, Abner.
Yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Gage.
Yeah, thanks, Abner. I, I just kind of, I know we're kind of running on time here, so I'll be real quick. I have probably like three quick questions. Question number one, do you have an up-to-date statistic for what our vaccination rate is for Ketchikan residents sixty-five and over?
I do, is eighty-nine percent, age sixty-five and older.
Thank you. Do we have a number for total citizens, I guess, sixteen and over?
Sixteen and over is fifty-eight percent and all ages, even those who aren't eligible for the vaccine yet, is forty-seven percent of our total population.
Okay. So one more question that would be, I guess, a little bit of an opinion question, but in your professional opinion, would you say it is an accurate assessment to say every citizen who obviously is of age, who wants to be vaccinated, has had that opportunity and that people who are concerned with this for their health or for comorbidities has had ample opportunity to get the vaccine if they so desired? Is that accurate?
Or anyone who's in the, who's covered by the EUA, right, and eligible in that sense, there, we've had vaccines available for a fairly significant period of time where we have not been constricted by the supply of vaccines. So I, I think the answer to that is yes, the vaccine is widely available for anyone who is old enough to receive it and wants to receive it. Our providers are not out of appointments, we're not out of vaccine. So yes, they can get it if they want to and they meet the current E.
Okay, thank you. And so I guess my final point that I would make since you, you said in response to Councilmember Bradbury was that you're looking for some kind of direction from elected officials, which we would be under that classification. And I would just like to take the opportunity to give my concerns or my opinion on the matter. And I'll tell you, I've been hearing from a lot of people who maybe don't follow this super close, they're not aware of all the matrices and protocols, but they know I'm on the council and they call me and they are, they are mad that their kids' little league is shut down, that their kid's senior year of sports is shut down, that the rec center's at twenty-five percent, you know? And what people are saying, and I tend to agree, is at this point in the game where the vaccine is readily available, each person makes their own responsible or irresponsible decision and risk assessment. And if people are, are healthy, they're probably more likely to be a little less cautious. And if they're not healthy, they're probably vaccinated and not at risk. So I kind of, when you ask for a direction, my direction would be, I think we're, we're kind of getting toward the end, in my opinion, would be that it's probably time to kind of let people make their own decisions and maybe loosen up like we talked about before. So anyways, I've spoke long enough, but that's my direction. Thank you.
Thank you for those thoughts.
Does any other council members want to, go ahead, Councilmember Zinkie? Can't hear you, Judy.
Do you hear me now? I think that this should be made an agenda item for another meeting. I think there's a lot to be said here. I'm also getting a lot of calls, people asking when the EOC is going to sunset. Businesses are constantly shutting down, opening up, shutting down, laying off people, bringing people back. You know, I get it, but I think we really do need to take a look at this and I personally would like to have this as a separate agenda item because I don't think we can discuss it all here now under communications. That's all I have. Thank you.
Did anyone else want, have any questions for Chief Hoag? Thank you, Abner.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving along. Persons to be heard. What have you got for us, Madam Clerk?
Our first speaker is Tiffany Cook.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Tiffany Cook. I'm a resident of the city and I was born and raised in Ketchikan. I speak to you this evening as a private citizen and not on behalf of any organization with which I am affiliated. First of all, let me thank each and every one of you and all of the members of the EOC for your leadership throughout the ordeal that has been COVID-19. Your efforts are greatly appreciated. My question tonight, and it sounds like it's already been, been begun to be mulled over, is where, where do we go from here? On March nineteenth, twenty twenty, this body passed an emergency declaration, which was obviously a necessity at the time, given the circumstances and all of the unknown. What set our declaration apart from that of other cities and from the state of Alaska is that ours is indefinite with no requirement for periodic review. Contrast this with the state, which required review and renewal every thirty days, or the municipality of Anchorage, which required every ninety days. There are legal questions that are starting to arise in other municipalities where there is no longer an active state of emergency at the state level and there are likely constitutional issues with an indefinite order being governed by unelected officials. Let me give you something to ponder. What was the original objective of our efforts when this pandemic, pandemic ramped up? We were all told that we needed to flatten the curve. We were told we needed to allow time and space to gather supplies, to educate people, to allow time to build up our healthcare infrastructure and to protect our most vulnerable. Well, tonight I would like to congratulate each and every one of you in our entire community because you and we did all of those things and every one of the people on this island should be grateful for it. So here we are today, fourteen months later, and our situation is quite different than those early frantic days. We know a great deal more about this disease and how it is spread. We have treatments and therapies that have been proven effective in treating the virus and we have a vaccine. As of today, eighty-nine As of today, 89% of our senior citizens have been vaccinated and 58% of our population 16 and over. And as soon as next week, that vaccine could be available to those 12 and over. Everyone over the age of 16 has had the opportunity for more than two months to receive the vaccine. Yes, those under 12 still do not have a vaccine available to them, but as we heard, it's coming and the data overwhelmingly indicates that this virus does not make young people seriously ill. Our vaccine numbers have definitely hit a plateau over the past couple of weeks and it's beginning to appear that all of those who want a vaccine have had it. So I ask you, how long is it our responsibility to manage individual risk? The cornerstone of this republic is individual freedom and with that freedom comes personal responsibility. When is it time to shift the responsibility to the individuals and away from the government? I have chosen to protect myself by being vaccinated as soon as I was eligible and spreading the word that I was safe and I feel fine and here I sit four months later and I've kept those around me safe, including my children. When is it no longer my job to manage that risk for everyone else? In order to move forward, people need an incentive to get out of this. An indefinite state of emergency and continued limitations are clearly no longer working to encourage compliance. I believe that our current local situation can largely be attributed to COVID fatigue. People are done, they are tired, and we are watching our children suffer. The consequences of this will be long, long reaching in the mental and physical health of our children and that right now there is no light at the end of the tunnel, just an indefinite state of emergency. So I come to you not with all of the solutions, but I am willing to be a part of it and I ask you to start the conversation. What are our benchmarks? What is the plan for de-escalating and eventually deactivating the EOC? What is the end game? Where do we go from here? Because right now we are stuck and we need some momentum to push us forward. Thank you so much for listening and I stand ready to engage in conversation and, and help wherever I can.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Cook? Thank you very much. Who is next, Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Al Jacobson.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go ahead.
Hello, members of the City Council. My name is Alan Jacobson. I am the Director of Maintenance for the Ketchikan Gateway Borough School District. I would like to speak on a proposal, sell your surplus vehicles that you will discuss and vote on later tonight during your new business. I would like to take a moment to offer a few good reasons to consider approving the proposal. Consider the one-and-done transaction, you can be done with the matter in a one-time transaction, save your people time and money to allow you to get on with the more important matters of the city. The tax-paying public has already paid for these vehicles, keeping them in government hands might give the public better optics that full use of the equipment is being realized. We are aware of and willing to work on fixing the existing issues with some of the rigs. This would be especially important for some of the trucks that may not sell at bid due to their issues. District maintenance could very much use the vehicles. We have spare parts, the Astros in particular, because we have ran these trucks for many years. With shrinking budgets, the influx of some spare rigs, used rigs would allow us some more time to start purchasing new rigs at a more manageable pace. With the overall public nature and use of our district school buildings, we all have a common vested interest in helping keep our buildings well-maintained. We are multiple governments, but one community. Thank you for considering the KGB school districts offer for your surplus vehicles. I will be available for questions during your discussion period later if needed. Thank you very much.
Sorry, it wouldn't unmute me. It's thinking for its, the system is, is thinking for itself. Thank you, Mr. Jacobson. Do any councilmembers have questions for him right now? Okay, we will discuss this in a few minutes then.
And that's the end of our public comment.
Thank you. Okay, moving ahead to the consent agenda. With the forbearance of the council, I'd like to move, move a couple of items onto the consent agenda. The first one, actually, the ones I'd like to move are 6A1, 6A2, 6B1, and 7A9. Most of those are ones that are on their second reading anyway, but any, any thoughts? Okay, seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you call, will you list the items? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Do we have a motion for consent?
Chair, I may have to accept the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you please read the items?
Approval of minutes, regular City Council meeting of April 15th, 2021. Amendment number three to the Alaska Marine Highway System Winter Layup Agreement Number 2520S008 for the use of berth three. Change order number one final to contract number 2021, Bar Harbor North Piling Replacement Pool Engineering, Inc., liquor license renewal, Oking Cag and Edgewater Inn, exempting procurement of SCADA maintenance support systems from competitive bidding, written quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, Open Systems International, Inc. This is a long one. Ordinance number 201931 authorizing the execution and delivery of a schedule to the existing master equipment lease and purchase agreement for the acquisition, financing, and leasing of an ambulance and related ambulance agreement. Authorizing the execution and delivery of other documents required in connection therewith. Authorizing all other actions necessary to the consummation of the transactions contemplated by this ordinance, exempting the lease from competitive bidding and certain other procurement requirements, second reading. Appointments to boards and commissions by Mayor Severson, which are both to the historic commission. Ordinance number 211929 approving a site use agreement between Vertical Bridge S3 Assets LLC and the City of Ketchikan DBA, Ketchikan Public Utilities, in second reading, and a budget transfer that was laid on the table tonight and Bar Harbor North Piling Replacement Phase Two.
It's been moved to the second, is there any discussion?
I just have one just question.
Sure, go ahead, Councilmember Bradbury.
I'm not necessarily sure who I should direct it to, maybe Carl might have an answer. Mark, I'm not sure there. Is there any emergency grant funding that we could apply for or have we applied for or looked for for these other pilings that are in really rough shape?
Councilmember Bradbury, there might be, what Mr. Hilson has advised me, that the pilings really need to be replaced immediately. They are a danger, which doesn't afford us the time to go out and seek grant funding. Mark, if you want to expand on that, please feel free to do so.
No, Carl, I think you, you got it exactly right. These are urgent.
That is your question, Councilmember Bradbury?
Well, yeah.
I know it wasn't the answer you wanted, but it wasn't answered. Any other discussion about the consent agenda? Clerk will call the roll.
Yes.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Laura?
Yes.
Bradbury?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Moving on to new business, we have item 7A1, declaring a surplus 62 forfeited firearms and authorizing their exchange for departmental safety equipment, coastal commercial services. Chair will entertain a motion.
Your Honor.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
Make sure I'm reading the right one. It's the yellow, right, Kim?
Yes.
This looks weird. Pursuit to section 3.12070B of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, and the City Council declare a surplus 62 forfeited firearms and authorize their exchange for departmental safety equipment from coastal commercial services.
Second.
Moved to the second, discussion.
Your Honor, I have some questions on this.
Go ahead.
Um, one, I'd like to understand a little more, are these, are these weapons, evidence weapons or do they still have serial numbers? I'm just a little leery on selling and do we have like a value on these?
Mr. Mayor, I would have to defer to Deputy Chief Mattson. Eric, can you shed some light?
I can shed some light on this, if everybody can hear me okay.
Yes, go ahead.
So these are weapons that are from criminal cases, these are forfeited items, and yes, they have their serial numbers. No serial number would actually make it a felony possessed. So if we have any firearms that fit that criteria, no serial number, and I'll just say other weapons that have been used in homicide or suicide, those weapons are destroyed. Those aren't weapons that we consider to, to fit into this category, but these are weapons that are forfeited through the courts. As far as criminal cases, they could be intoxicated people possessing them, they could be cases where the firearm was involved with a narcotics case. And I don't have the, the total amount of what the, the exchange would be, but I, I think, I, I don't know, Mr. Amlon, do you remember that number?
I don't, Eric.
Councilmember Gage, I want to say it was right around this $8,000 mark, I think is what I remember, is what the exchange price would be or what would be offered from Commercial Coastal for that safety equipment. And then another, another thing about this exchange, so we have approximately 10 soft-body armor vests that are expiring within the next, this year and the following year. Each vest costs just under $900, so this exchange would essentially pay for that soft-body armor that the officers wear every day on duty.
Did that answer your questions, Councilmember Gage?
Yeah, I just had one more. So when it goes to the coastal commercial services, do, can you elaborate on what they do with them?
Yeah, so he's a-
That guarantees they don't end up back on the street or anything.
No, so these are, he's a federal firearms licensed dealer and he would take those firearms and he would do what he would want with them. Some of them I know that are in pretty bad shape, he would use some as parts, but if they are in good condition, he would categorize them in his inventory and they would be available for sale back into the community to those that are, pass that background check through the, the, the check that the FFLs do.
Okay. And this is down south or I'm just?
No, this is a local company.
Any other questions, Councilmember?
No, not at this time.
Did anyone else have any questions about this?
Your Honor.
Go ahead, Mr. Gas.
I don't necessarily have a question, but I just wanted to say kudos to you guys for finding ways to save money and the only thing I could think of to make it better is to give those weapons out to the council next time. Just kidding.
Probably not the best idea, depending on how our meetings are going, but you never know.
I do, I do have one more, Mattson, just out of curiosity, when, do they make sure that these weapons don't go back to the original owners that had them confiscated?
Well, I, I can't guarantee that, but I mean, if, if a person is eligible again to purchase a firearm, they could certainly purchase them back, but a lot of these cases are going to be felony-type cases, so I doubt that they would be able to pass that background check. But I, I can't certainly say 100% that no, they wouldn't be able to buy it back.
And, and just, can you elaborate on what kind of weapons we're talking about?
So these are weapons that would, a majority are handguns, shotguns, rifles, and that's it. Those are the type of weapons that are available, that he would consider to, to have any value.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Deputy Chief Mattson? Okay, Clerk will call the roll.
Yes.
Bradbury?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Gas?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Gage?
No.
Motion passes, 6 to 1. Moving on, item 7A2, sale of surplus vehicles to the Ketchikan Gateway Borough School District. Chair will entertain a motion.
Your Honor.
Is that you, Mr. Flora?
It is.
Go ahead, please.
Pursuant to section 3.12070D2 of the Ketchikan Municipal Code and move the City Council direct the city manager to dispose of the seven vehicles identified in the contracts grants administrators memorandum dated April 22nd, 2021 by accepting the Ketchikan Gateway Borough School District's offer of $8,500 dated April 7th, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move to the second, any discussion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead, Mr. Flora.
I did a book sheet on some of these. This is in my mind, I would like to see it go this way because our budget, the borough's budget, the school district budget, everybody's tight for money. This would help serve our community, I think. It would cost the city several thousand dollars, but I think the benefit to the school district outweighs the cost to the city.
Further discussion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead, Mr. Gas.
I, I agree with Mr. Flora. I actually worked at the school district maintenance shop for a while and Jeff Gilman, he's the mechanic over there and he does a really good job and like Mark said, they've got a very tight budget, just like us, and I know that a lot of the rigs over there got a lot of wear on them and they do have several of those Astro vans, so I think it would be, you know, like Al said when he was speaking, you know, it's all government taxpayer money and I think this would be a great use for it, even if we could maybe scrape up a couple thousand more possibly, but this is really a prudent use for it, so I fully support it.
Anyone else want to weigh in on this one? Clerk will call the roll. Madam Clerk, are you out there?
Yeah, yeah. Flora?
Sorry.
Yes.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Gas?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Edbury?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes, 7 to 1. Moving on to item 7A3, reduction in nonrepresented and represented employee work week. We've all had a chance to look at the material that staff has presented. What would the council like to do?
Your Honor.
Is that?
That's council. Zingy?
I'm sorry, yes, go, go ahead, Councilmember Zingy.
I move the City Council direct the city manager to take no action regarding the implementation of a reduced work week for non-represented- of a reduced work week for nonrepresented and represented employees, pending the receipt of Federal American Rescue Plan Act funding, and further authorize the city manager to retain the parking enforcement specialist through the end of 2021.
Second.
Move to the second, discussion.
Your honor.
Yes, go ahead.
I do appreciate the comments from staff, although I will say some of the comments did surprise me a little. As I read through some of them, I kind of have some concerns for morale. A lot of comments took issue with management. The ones about the council caught me off guard because I believe that what we did was we wanted to ask a question, is there any interest in a reduced work week? So to me, that was a yes or no. And it appears that it became somewhat confrontational, and I guess maybe I didn't expect that. But it was never my intent to push this. I don't think it was any of our intents. We just wanted to see, was there any interest out there? Apparently, there's not. So now we'll have to, you know, go back to the drawing board and figure something else out, I guess, if it comes to that.
Your honor.
Go ahead, Councilmember Gage.
The only thing on this, I did have a question regarding the parking enforcement specialist through the end of 2021. Is that due to the budget? Are we gonna be considering her in 2022? I just, I know that she does a lot in this community, and I just want to make, I'm just clarify, is that just because of the budget year?
This was to continue parking enforcement through the end of 2021.
Okay.
Councilmember Gage, I'm not in a position to have a good feel yet as to what the fiscal year 2022 budgets are gonna look like. There are a lot of floating pieces out there at the moment that need to come together.
I just, yeah, I just wanted to make sure I was reading that right, so, thank you.
Any other questions regarding this issue? Hearing none, clerk will call a roll.
Gage?
Yes.
Pfeifer?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Burjaron?
Aye.
Bradbury?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
As they say, if you don't ask, you don't know. So we asked, and now we know. Okay, moving on to item 7A4, ongoing review and discussion of cruise-related issues. Does staff have anything they want to address us with on this tonight?
We have nothing further.
I'm sorry, was, I'm sorry, was that nothing?
We have nothing further to add.
Okay. You got anything, Sam?
No, let's move on.
Okay. Moving on, ongoing, item 7A5, ongoing review and discussion of stable Alaska COVID-19 health mandates. We heard a lot from the chief, and we had a good discussion about what the end game is. Do you have anything else, Mr. Burjaron?
Negative.
Okay, we'll move right on. Okay, let's see. It takes us to... Okay, number six, ongoing review and discussion of COVID-19 mitigation plan updates for general government and Ketchikan Public Utilities. Councilmember Flora.
Thank you, your honor. We had asked for a 30-day update from staff, and I was hoping we could get just a brief overview from the manager for the community's benefit on what steps are being taken.
Can do that, Councilmember Flora. Back, I believe, at the March 18 meeting, the council adopted mitigation plans for both KPU and general government relative to dealing with the possibility of no major cruise activity in Ketchikan in 2021. We outlined specific steps relative to some minor personnel reconfiguration, reductions in capital spending, the possibility of grant funding coming forward to mitigate those fiscal constraints that we knew would face us if we had no major crews. As you recall, we had budgeted a 50% level of crews in 2021, and that's not gonna happen now. So what we've tried to do with this report is summarize through the end of March what we have achieved relative to the mitigation plans adopted by the council. It's pretty self-explanatory. I'm not gonna go through every item. Personnel savings will accrue with each payroll period that goes by, and we've defined that. The capital budgets that the council agreed to hold off are off on, are summarized in the tables that the finance director put together. For instance, the council, we froze $865,000 in the Commercial Passenger Vessel Fund in order to have those funds available to mitigate losses at the port if necessary. We haven't done anything on the port fund yet because we're still waiting to see a number of things that are gonna happen, I think, over the next couple of months that will affect how we approach that. But the numbers are pretty well spelled out in the report. If council has specific questions, we can try to answer those.
Does anyone have any questions for the manager at this time? Seeing none, thank you, Carl. Did that address your issues, your issue, Councilmember Flora?
Yes, your honor.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item, discussion of funding, preparation, submitting of a proposal to homeport an additional Coast Guard vessel in Ketchikan. This is, Mayor Severson put this on the agenda, and he asked me to address it briefly, just to kind of let you guys know where he's thinking about moving on this one. Anyone who's been following the news in the last few months knows the Coast Guard is looking at replacing a lot of old cutters, and even replacing the icebreakers. And you may have seen, there was an article in the paper a few days ago where the governor was talking about working with Alaska Congressional delegation to encourage as many of those new cutters, we're talking about big ones, we're not talking fast-response cutters here. We're talking about boats with, that are in the 300-foot range and have crews of 150 and up, having those in Alaska. Now, what the governor also said during his, was he didn't want communities in Alaska competing against each other. Well, that ship has sailed already. Pretty much every coastal community in Alaska is looking to be involved in this process. And I guess Mayor would like to let you guys know, he's hoping to get our city involved in the process, and wanted to make sure that if you guys had any concerns or information you wanted to pass along, but you want to start that process as soon as possible. And he also sees a potential of us hiring probably an expert, perhaps, you know, there are a whole bunch of retired Coast Guard admirals out there who know the process. And the whole porting process is very convoluted, and it's not something that our staff could be expected to handle. So just sort of giving you guys a heads up, in all likelihood, we'll be seeking some outside help on this, but we certainly want to be in the process. And also, we'll be involved, probably, almost 100% likely, working with the borough on this because, as we all know, you know, Ward Cove has a lot of space if indeed the Coast Guard wanted to port a large ship out there, you know. There are other locations in the community, but that's probably the most logical. And besides the 130 to 150 crew members, they're expecting probably another 100 more shoreside personnel. And plus, coast guardsmen bring their families. So it's hard to see a downside in being involved in this process because, you know, you're looking at several hundred people, if we were successful, coming with that ship to Ketchikan, which could only be a good thing. Did you have anything else you wanted to add, Mr. Amlon?
No, nothing further.
So did any councilmembers have any thoughts or responses or anything that you say you should be looking at? Okay.
That's good to me.
Yeah, no, I see. I don't see a downside. It would be nice to have one of those 300-foot cutters parked in Ketchikan a lot of the year. That would be a good thing for our community. Anyway, he's gonna pursue that, you know, the mayor's gonna start, and staff are gonna start pursuing that with the group delegation and the borough and others. And hopefully, we can bring a big ship to Ketchikan, if you're willing. Okay, moving on, item 7A8, budget transfer, community tourism strategy joint fund. Chair will entertain a motion. Or not, I mean-
Your honor.
Yes, go ahead.
I move the city council take such action as determined appropriate by the city's financial participation in a community tourism strategy as developed by the Ketchikan Gateway Borough per the request for financial support in the amount of $20,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move to the second. We also have Mr. Herney online. So if there were any questions they wanted to ask him, he's available to answer them.
Your honor.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Gage.
Gage.
It's our guest, sorry.
Question for Mr. Herney. I just, I read the deal on this, but can you just give us your quick 30-second sales pitch on, why should, why we, I mean, can you sell us on this real quick, please? I'm kind of on the fence, to be honest, so, if you would.
I will try. I'm a government guy, I'm not really a businessman, so I'll try to sell you as best I can. So in order for us to be sustainable moving into the end of the future, to try to get our community to be more resilient, we talked about this tourism strategy a few years ago before the pandemic hit. And the analogy that I used was kind of cleaning up our house, right? When you take somebody over, you tidy up your house. You take care of, or at least around our house, tear all the laundry on the couch, the dishes in the sink, that sort of thing. When tourism came, cruise ships started showing up, we adapted. We started moving things around as a community, but I don't know if there was a long-term plan in place, at least not that I could find. And working through, you know, Patty over at KVB has been working really hard, and she's been doing a great job over there. And so this would be a strategy for everybody in the community, the residents, as well as the industry, to have a point out in the future that we can all work towards together as a unified body, rather than what's happening in Juneau, where they're pitting, some of the residents are pitting against the industry. So that's kind of the skinny on it, is just trying to figure out how we can work as a community and not end up in a situation like Juneau.
Thank you, Mr. Herney. Any other questions for Mr. Herney?
Your honor.
Go ahead, is that Ms. Cindy, or, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Bradbury. I wish I had all you on the screen here, I'm kind of-
You can make that happen, Dave.
I probably could, but I'd probably also cut the whole thing off if I tried pushing any buttons. You know me.
We're just gonna say our name in front of that.
Okay, so is this a long-term, like, plan? Are they, is this group gonna be around for a long-term or long period of time? Or is it a very short-term, once we get a plan together, disband it?
I'm not quite clear on the group aspect of it. We, the strategy will be able to be updated, if that's what you're asking. It should be a living document as we move forward into the future. It should not stay stagnant. That's why it's a strategy rather than a plan. A plan kind of indicates that there's an end goal, where a strategy is more of a direction heading into the future. Does that answer your question? I'm not sure I-
Yeah.
Okay.
And the next question would be, who would make up, I'm gonna use the word group again, because I don't really know what term to use. Who's gonna make up this group to create this strategy?
Well, so it would be a contractor who would come here, and the group would be the community, the industry, the, all the cities, the tribes, the residents, everybody, all the tour operators. That's at least the intent behind it. It wouldn't be done in a, you know, in a committee meeting or anything like that. It would be meant, it's meant to be a community strategy.
So let me just make sure I understand. So you said we're gonna hire somebody from outside our community to make up a strategy plan for our community?
Yes, ones that are, yeah, a contractor that is intimately knowledgeable about the industry, the cruise industry, as well as tourism, and come here, hear from the community, and then, you know, through public meetings and different types of public engagements, and then craft it from that. It's probably no different than, you know, our all-hazard mitigation plan that was done by outside contractors, you know. Our comprehensive plan at one point in time, same sort of thing.
Yeah, I guess for me, and thank you for answering those and being here. For me, I can't imagine hiring a contractor from outside our community to create a plan for our, or a strategy for our community. There's so many people within the community that are capable of doing this at various levels. And that statement has really, I was very supportive of this, but I am not supportive of this now. I do not believe in hiring a contractor. Look through the whole tourism process. Contractors have really, they haven't really gotten what Ketchikan's about or what Ketchikan needs, even though they listen, they say they listen, and, you know, conduct all this information. I just, it's not a proven thing that they are the best, best ones to be doing this.
Are we all locked up? Are we on, is just the video that's locked up? And we're all, we're all here still talking?
I know, I can see you here, three of us.
I'm sorry, was that Carl?
Yeah.
I'm live. You were asking if anybody else was on, I'm on.
I'm on. Yeah, we're back.
I'm not sure, I sent you the request.
It's like Abby is still just locked up.
But she's not muted, I think we have audio. I'm muted.
Yeah, I think we've got audio, right?
This is Jason Bede, here on the KPU. We're looking into it, we'll follow up quickly.
Okay, Jason, thank you.
Okay, I'm assuming that- Did you all want to stand aside for a minute while we look into this? Or should we just go on, go on here with who's still on?
I think we're coming back on. I've been unmuted, but I finally, I'm, I've been muted, now I'm unmuted. We can see several of you, so let's hang on till Jason. So let's hang on till Jason. Huh? Oh, everyone's back on, Dave, so, or Vice Mayor, you can continue.
Okay. Gosh, where were we? I'm sorry, Councilmember.
I had asked a question.
You were asking a question, I thought, there?
Yeah, if we were going to consider contracting with, say, the KVB and the, the Chamber of Commerce, were we going to consider some local contractors, or is it a done deal that you're going to go look outside? Like, do you already have someone in mind?
Thank you, Ms. Zingy. We are crafting the RFP as we, right now. We've sent it over for review by the, by the city assistant manager, and then also by Patty Mackey at the KVB. And so the RFP, the plan is to put the RFP out, and we'll see what responses we receive. So if someone local would, wants to apply, I mean, we're not limiting it to just outside sources. So, yeah, it definitely would be open for anyone.
Perfect. Thank you.
That's good. Any other questions for Mr. Herny?
Yeah, Mr. Herny. Your Honor.
Is, is, is that you, Councilmember Gage?
Yeah, and Flora, I think is back there, too. But just a quick question. Are we ever, have we thought about having a survey within the community that we can mail out? So that we actually get input, because when we talk about our community meetings, people don't show up, and it becomes very frustrating to actually get input from the community. And it would be nice to actually send out a number. If you're going to do it, I guess, actually see if we can get some feedback from the community, and not just from the, the industry. I think that, you know, there's just a lack of, and I, I don't want to say people are not interested. I just think there's an intimidation factor there, that they don't, they don't come, whereas if they had something they could fill out and give an opinion, similar to the one we did with our employees, we might actually get some insight to how people feel about moving forward on those things.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Gage. Yes, that's part of the outreach, the, the public engagement, is to reach out. Hopefully it will be through some sort of internet as well, so that way they can respond that way as well. We just did a resident housing survey, and that was, that was very productive. The McKinley Group actually did that one for us, and, and they called a good percentage of, of people and got a good cross-section of the community. So yes, we're, we're hopeful to, to reach out to all, all different sectors of the community. We, we definitely don't want it to be one-sided, and, and we definitely don't want to leave anyone out. So, yes.
Any other questions for Mr. Herny or discussion on the side? Hearing none. Actually, Madam Clerk, it's been, it's been a few minutes since we heard the actual motion. Could you, could you repeat it for us, please?
Can. The motion is, the city council takes such action as determined appropriate regarding the city's financial participation in a community tourism strategy as developed by the Catch Can Gateway Borough per the request for financial support in the amount of $20,000. It was moved by Zingy and seconded by Gage.
Thank you. Clerk will call the roll.
Gage?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Bradbury?
No.
Flora?
No.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Gage?
No. No.
And Kifer?
I assume it's three to three?
That's correct.
Hey, all right. Yes.
That passes four to three.
Okay, moving on, we have B1, Ordinance Number 21-1932, adding a new section 3.12.090 to the Catch Can Municipal Code entitled "Sale of Subsea Cable Services and Purchase of Transport Capacity in First Reading." Chair will entertain a motion.
Your Honor, this is Abby.
Yes, please go ahead.
I move the city council approving first reading, Ordinance Number 21-1932, adding its new section 3.12.090 to the Catch Can Municipal Code entitled "Sale of Subsea Cable Services and Purchase of Transport Capacity and Establishing an Effective Date."
Is there a second?
Second.
Moving to second, the discussion. Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ron?
Which one was that?
Bergeron.
Oh, Bergeron.
Oh. Aye.
Flora?
Yes.
Gage? Gage?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Bradbury?
Yes.
Motion passes, and that alleviates any need for an executive session tonight. Moving on to vouchers. Is there a motion?
No.
That's a lot of money.
I know.
Your Honor.
Uh, go ahead, Councilmember.
I have to approve vouchers to All American Auto in the amount of $820.80.
Second.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Gage?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Gage? Gage?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Bradbury?
Yes.
Flora?
Abstained.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero. Moving on now to manager's reports. What do you have for us tonight, Mr. Amlon?
Just a limited number, Mr. Mayor. I, I spoke with Mayor Severson this morning. As we did not do the executive session on the CLIA presentation, he indicated to me that he would like to be a part of that. He will not be here for the meeting of May 20th. We are now looking either at a special meeting of June 2nd, or the regular meeting of June 3rd. It's our collective recommendation that the council might want to consider a special session for that topic. It's, it's quite a detailed presentation, and there's a lot to talk about, and we're looking for approval to call a special meeting on June 2nd at 6 o'clock.
Mr. Amlon, the second works for my, for me. The third, I'll be going.
There's no objection from the council, then we'll move ahead on June 2nd at 6 o'clock. Along similar lines, there was a meeting of the Port Communities Group yesterday to talk about the new CDC guidance. What I can offer the council on that, at least from the line's perspective, they seem much more encouraged about possibly getting a limited season going, either middle to late July. It would not be a full complement of ships, nor would the ships be at, at full capacity. The issue of the Jones Act is not resolved yet, but there are a number of people who seem somewhat confident that that's going to be resolved in the next couple of weeks. So I've instructed the Port and Harbors Director to start putting together what he needs to do in terms of staffing, to be able to man the port relative to whatever traffic would come through the city. We're also talking to Ward Cove regarding medical protocols that we're going to have to put in place relative to not overwhelming the, the hospital's capacity to deal with COVID, and Ward Cove has agreed to meet with us and the hospital to discuss that issue. So we'll keep you posted as we go along. But right now, there just seems to be some guarded optimism. As I indicated to the council some weeks ago, Chief White is retiring in June. We posted the position internally. We had three internal applicants put in their applications. I've met with all three. They were not interviews for the position. It was more to give me a feel for their general perspective of the police department, and how they would feel if I opened it up to external candidates. Following those discussions, I think it is in the best interest to move forward with opening up the recruitment to external candidates. That's what I'm going to do. But in doing so, I let all three of the local candidates know that they would automatically get a buy into the final round of interviews. I was very impressed with all three of the local candidates, but I just think it'd be who of us if we could get a larger pool. So we will keep you updated on that. The last thing I have, we noted on the agenda, KPU Telecom Division relative to the project to do the undersea fiber cable to Prince Rupert. We did put together a promotional video, which the council's been given links to, to see that. That's now available on the city website relative to finding the link. So if anybody out in the community wants to take a look at that, they're, they're more than able to. And, and that's all I've got tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Now, thank you, Mr. Amlon. Any questions for the manager?
I do have one, Your Honor.
Go ahead, Mr. Gage.
Yeah, Manager Amlon, just one question on the police chief thing. Not to, you know, nitpick or anything, but if we had three really great local candidates, you know, I guess, I guess what I'm trying to say is I'm, I'm always a fan of hiring local when it works, so I guess I would say maybe I would, I'd be rooting for the local guys, is all I wanted to say. But I trust your good judgment on it.
Councilmember Gage, I, I, I understand what you're saying. The process that we're going to go through now to open it up externally is the same process we did the last time we headed a recruitment, and that ended up with the appointment of Chief White. So I just got to make sure I dot the i's and cross the t's, and I think this, this is the best way to go about it. The three local candidates were notified before I notified the council tonight, so they're aware of it. And, and so far, I've gotten no, no pushback, so I think, I think we're on track.
Understood. Thank you.
Any other questions for the manager?
Your Honor, it's Abby.
Go, go ahead, Ms. Bradbury.
Um, Carl, do we have an update on our Ports and Harbor Director position? Like, do we have any applicants? Is, like, do we look like we could relieve Mark anytime soon?
The applications have been slow to come in. We have some people who on paper do appear to be qualified. I'll be taking a look at that more closely in the next couple of weeks. But I don't have a pool that I would have hoped for. And I, I'm not sure whether that's just because of the uncertainty right now relative to crews as a whole, or whether it's more specific to Catch Can, and we really haven't defined what we want to do yet in terms of a plan. So we're going to keep advertising for a while more, and we'll see what we come up with.
Your Honor.
Um, go ahead.
I probably should have brought this up in the special meeting, but I would not be here. I don't return back from medical till the 4th of June, and that would, Taylor would be doing two meetings. If we're in person, it's not a big deal, that big of a deal, but when we're doing WebEx meetings, we do need two people here.
Mr. Mayor, I, I understand what the clerk is saying. When I talk about a special meeting on the 2nd, that presumes it can be an in-person meeting. I don't think this is something that can be done by Zoom.
Okay.
So hopefully the number will come down, and we'll get to where we need to be.
Okay, I just want to clarify, because that, that was one, the only issue I had there.
We, we need to all be in the same room for that particular meeting, so yeah, if, if, if it can't be in person, we have to put it off.
Then we can move it out. Okay, I just want a clarification on that. Thank you.
Your Honor.
Go ahead, Mr. Gage.
On that point, you know.
Is there anyone else out there?
Yeah, Dave, this is Carl. I'm live.
Yeah, I'm live.
I'm here.
Oh, okay, so, so it appears to be Mr. Gage and Ms. Bradbury are on, are sort of.
Janalee.
Oh, Janalee is too. Mine doesn't go that far. Oh, yeah, there she is.
And Kim.
No, Kim's not.
Do you have her on shore?
Madam Clerk, are you there? You're probably right. I guess we'll pause for a few seconds here and see if they all come back. If not, we'll figure out something.
Oh, was I the only one that froze up?
No, 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 several are frozen up. We're waiting to see if they come back and.
Oh, there they are. There they go.
People are coming back.
No, I'm just saying you can speak into this.
Looks like the only one frozen up is the clerk. Lots of fine, how do you do?
I just can't unmute myself.
As I said, the system is, the system is thinking for itself. There's some artificial intelligence going on here.
Can you see, can you hear me there?
Yes.
Yeah, they can hear you if you noted.
So, on my iPad, it won't let me unmute myself, but I'm here and I can hear all you guys.
Okay, perfect. I guess I have one, one, one quick manager's report question for, for Mr. Amlon, if he's, if he's there.
Me or?
Good. So, NCL's been lobbing money bombs all over the region. What about us? Are we hearing anything?
So turn your volume up now.
Obviously, Juneau and, and Sitka have gotten some words. What, what's, what's, what's the good word for us? What do we know yet?
Publicly, Norwegian released a statement that Catch Can would be receiving $2 million. We have a, we have a call with them, I think scheduled for tomorrow, to find out the details about that, and we'll report more back at the May 20th meeting.
Okay, and that's a, oh, no strings attached?
I, I don't know any more than what I've said.
Okay, that's, that's, that's all I wanted to hear. Okay, that's, that's, that's all I wanted to hear. Any other questions for the manager? Okay, city clerks file.
Your honor, I'm back.
City attorneys file.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Future agenda items. I think we obviously heard that, that some, some council, some council members wanted, want to discuss the future of the EOC and other, and COVID issues, so I'm sure that will be coming up as soon as we can get, get something on the agenda for that.
Your honor, Jan here.
Yes.
I have one, I don't know if it's an agenda item. I'm actually curious if, I saw the sales tax thing we got, Carl, but I was wondering if there was any way we could get, since we now have a baseline of our tax dollars that we pay as a community without cruise industry, I'd like to actually see a comparison of what we are paying as a community versus what was paid out by during like 2019 during non-COVID times between the cruise industry and the Ketchikan region or, yeah, the community as a comparison. Is that possible? I know you cannot break down businesses, but I know you could break down sectors.
I'm going to have to talk with the finance director, Councilmember Gage. I know we can do it total basis, what we received sales tax pre-COVID versus what we received in 2020. If you want it broken down in sectors, we're going to have to talk to the borough and I know they guard that information pretty, pretty closely. Are you satisfied with just total or do you want it broken down by sector?
I, I would just like to see, since we have a baseline, this last year, we spent most of our time with no industry. It would be nice to see a comparison because we keep hearing how they support our community and honestly, I'm to the point where, yeah, so prove it. So there's, there's the fact that we can probably break down the sectors that see the industry and how much they actually pay out in sales tax, since they want to argue more people we bring, the more sales tax you get. And I'd like to actually see that in numbers.
I, I can tell you, Councilmember Gage, that our projections for 20 and 2021, we're looking at a loss of about $8 million in sales tax. Lacey, Michelle, you're both online. Isn't that about right?
Based on what we budgeted, but what we projected to receive in 2020 was a record amount due to passengers that we expected to visit Ketchikan. But this year, we, sorry, we expected to lose a little over $2 million based on what we budgeted for a half-year season or a 50% cruise season. So in our 2019 numbers, we can show you what we received by month and then what we received in 2020 and 2021 so far to date.
Councilmember Gage, we, we can put it together. I just got word that we can do it by sector, so we'll try to put something together for you for the March 20th meeting.
Right, I appreciate it.
Any other questions for, I'm sorry, questions, but any, any other future agenda items? Okay, mayor and council comments. Let's start with Councilmember Bergeron.
I'm, I have a lot of comments, but I'm going to spare everybody tonight. I'm, I'm pretty disgusted about the, the COVID outbreak in Ketchikan and what went on with the high school and I think I'll just leave it at that. Thanks.
Probably a wise choice. Councilmember Zingy?
I have no comments, Your Honor.
Councilmember Gas?
I do have a few, I'll try and be quick. I spoke with Madam Clerk last week about giving a very quick update and she said that council member comments would be the time. So anyways, we had our first, well, I had my first meeting on the, at the borough with the Planning and Zoning Committee and I was really happy with how things are going there. Basically, shout out to Mr. Harney, I think they're doing a great job and essentially what we're working on right now or what they're working on is basically making it easier for people to add, like as they say, mother-in-law apartments, making it more simple and easy for that because of the housing shortage to provide more presumably cheap housing. So that's a quick update on that. I also need to disclose publicly that I'm now a member of the IBW. I'm doing an apprenticeship to be a wireman, so I'm not sure if I would need to abstain from further negotiations and things of that nature. So I think I'll talk to Mitch some more, I talked to Carl about it. So anyways, I need to disclose that. And yeah, I look forward to more discussion on wrapping up the great job that the EOC's been doing and hopefully sooner or later getting him back to doing a great job at the fire chief. So that's all I've got and thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Gage?
Yeah, I'm going to stick with being disgusted myself with the way things were handled, but on a lighter note, I believe that there will be an art walk tomorrow. No, is it canceled? Okay, I wanted to know, I figured I'd ask or bring it up because I know it was, I got it in the mail, but I wasn't sure. The, and other than that, I got nothing, so.
Councilmember Flora?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Bradbury?
The only thing I have, and I know I've harped on it before, is I absolutely hate WebEx. I know that we're doing it out of safety measure, but I know I would, I would safely say 90% of us on, at this meeting are vaccinated. We sit, we social distance, there's no difference of the public watching us on WebEx or watching us in a room. They can still call in, they can still do the same options if we are sitting on a computer or if we are sitting in a room. And I just feel that we as a council accomplish more and work better and have better discussions when we are together in person. And clearly we're starting to get in issues that need to be face-to-face because these are serious, long conversations that we can't have internet cutting out and people freezing and, and so forth. So I really would like moving forward, even if we're at a high risk. We take the appropriate mitigation and the council and Carl or whoever needs to be there is in the room, social distance and providing, you're doing the meeting. That's just all I have to say.
Thank you. I'm sorry, was someone else wanting to chime in there? I'll take that as a no. I am also hearing people saying we need to get back to normal, whatever that is. And that we need to take our own, everyone needs to take their own responsibility for issues of COVID. And, and I, I, I understand that 100%, but we just had an example this last weekend of people not taking it seriously and what happened? You know, not everyone's going to make good choices, as we always tell our kids. In this case, it was kids and adults who didn't make any choices. As a community, you know, until we get people making good choices, things like the EOC and others are probably going to be with us for a while. If we can start learning to make better choices, then the EOC can go away. But in the meantime, I don't know. And with that, oh, congratulations on your, on your, on your, on your position, position. Anyway, Chair will entertain a motion.
Move to adjourn. Second.
We're out of here. Thank you all and, and like Abby, I hope we can do this all in person soon.
Thanks, Dave, for taking over. Did good. Talk to you later.
And we, we can have, I'm going to. That's I cam? Oh, I was just going to say, I'll start an email and, you know, I don't mind being in person, it just, there's limited to 20 people in any big, in a room. So I guess it's a choice of who wants to be in person and who wants to do WebEx because Sam's always been participating or lately been WebEx. So we can always have a WebEx and in-person. So the council members could be in person and maybe staff be WebEx. So we keep that limited number to 20 in the room.